I'm going to call the meeting to order. Six o'clock on Thursday, February the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And this is budget meeting number five of the two thousand and twenty-two budget cycle for the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal. And this is a combined meeting of the whole with members of the administration finance committee and members of the public works environmental services and facilities committee. Most of the members are here present in the chamber. But I see that there are a number of volunteer committee members attending by Zoom. I think I saw Mr. Maudler. Can't read some of the other names, but just recognize Mr. Maudler for sure. Most of the staff is here. Well, the CIO of the township is here in the council chamber along with the fire Mr. Brian Moore and the manager of the facilities department, Mr. Mike Spencer. And the treasurer, Ms. Stubbs is attending by Zoom. All right. So with those few opening remarks, I'm going to in a minute call for the approval of the agenda as amended. And I'd like to see a couple of changes to the agenda. First of all, we have a presentation from the public library board and Donna Gladstone, the CEO of the library is here. And I'd like to move her delegation up so that she's first and she can leave the meeting and be home before the weather starts. So the other change I'd like to make is I'd like to have item six H moved to six A and everything else below it. So I'm looking through a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Four C to four A, six H to six A. Do I have a mover? Deputy Mayor Deschamp moving. Does he have a second? Okay, Mr. Packwood's seconding. And so I'm going to call the question. Those in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. And item number three on the agenda is disclosure of community interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures of community interest here this evening? Chair notes knows disclosures of community interest. All right. So then I have delegations and presentations and we'll recognize the public library board presentation. Donna Gladstone, the CEO of the library. So Donna, if you'd like to use the podium area, you're welcome to. I guess you can't. Oh, it's already tilted the right way, is it?
That's okay. So thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. And before I, or before I ask any questions, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank council for their continued support. And also like to recognize Councilor Cameron for his good work on the board and for Mayor Seo for helping us kick off our TV summer reading program in the summer. We're hoping to do that again this year with perhaps a little more or a lot more programming involved and hope that perhaps other members of council can participate in that as well. And I'd also like to thank staff for their continued support and all the extra work that they helped me with throughout the budget process and the everyday work of the library. Just a couple of things. The, as you will see, the budget was decreased for this year. The reason for that is, as you will remember last year, when I made the presentation, we had a pretty healthy surplus and the agreement was that we got that surplus, we tried to get that surplus reduced. And COVID is one of my excuses. In that I wasn't able to get that down as much as we'd like. So I think in our discussions at the board, the only way we're going to get that reduction in that surplus is to reduce our ask from municipal council. But I would like to highlight some of the great things that we have done this year, this past year, and some of the things that we're looking ahead to. One of the things is the recreation lending libraries. We have a number of recreation, pieces of recreation equipment that we're lending out and we're hoping to get that established this year because last year we were with COVID, didn't get to get it out when we wanted to. So that's something that we'll work on to get it up to the public. In addition, all of our, our computers are now new at both branches. So we're in good shape there. Renovations to the Spencerville library. Are, there's just a little bit of trim and some electrical work that needs to be done and it's complete and I would invite anyone to have a peek at that. It's, we've had lots of positive response from the patrons that have been in. And again, the TV summer reading program was a huge success. We had thirty-three participants, which maybe doesn't seem like a lot, but considering there was four or five in previous years, we're really working to boost through that and it's an excellent program. Looking ahead to this year, we're excited with a new collection. It's a dyslexia friendly collection. And there's some resource material for parents. There's books for children. And our main purpose is to help those that perhaps aren't getting all the extra help at school for various reasons. So to be able to supplement the schools and parents and guardians. So our main focus is on children in grade one to four because that's where the reading really needs to be. They need to really learn at that point to be able to be good readers. So of course, the library being full of books, it's our, it's our goal to, to get those, those children in a better place. This year, we'd also like to have more programming for adults and seniors in the community. We've had some good response and suggestions from, from that demographic. So we'll continue to work on those kinds of things and continue to build partnership with community organizations. And I think that's just, I guess, the other thing is the first page, page three of the of the information that was sent, just, I just did some highlights of of the library and the circulation, the visits. And the fact that last year it costs a dollar twenty-five per month for the tax, for the taxpayers to have our, our libraries and outlets in them. So I would, again, thank you for the opportunity and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Donna. And you certainly have highlighted your report and I particularly want to note the statistics that you provided on page twenty-seven, although you didn't address yourself through them. But they do tell a story of how active the library has been. So open the floor up for questions. Chair, please, anybody? She's coming forward. Counselor Dillibow.
Yes, thank you, Chair and Donna. Congratulations. Job well done. A couple of questions. One is your recreation program. We didn't even know that actually. And what is it that we can rent there?
So right now we have fishing poles, we have sleds, we have footballs, baseballs, basketballs, soccer balls. We were, sorry, it, we, we had received funding a number of years ago from McNeil Foundation. And so we're just starting to build it. Yeah, so that.
I think that's great. You'd think you could expand because I think that there's a program, can you tire jump there, is it? Maybe Mike can help me where you can get a grant to buy, I'm just thinking like a couple of kayaks or something because you're so close to the river. Morrisburg does, very, very, so done that's a very, very successful doing that, but it is called Jump Bear. You might be able to get some money there from, from that. And may I keep going? And you had eighty-three new library cardholders. Could you break it down, Spencerville Cardinal, or roughly, if you know?
It's, it's pretty well even.
Fifty-fifty?
Pretty close, right? Yeah.
Good. And I have one more listener and that is the municipality comparison for the Edwardsburg Cardinals thirteen dollars forty-six capital. And we are the lowest in every place, closest to the Guss at sixteen, I mean, Cresta's thirty-eight. So I have to commend Donna and the board and Councilor Cameron. Job well done. Congratulations. Hopefully for another good year. Thank you so much.
Very much, Counselor. Any other questions for the CEO? Just a quick question. Is there any take up the poll on the recreation lending library, the recreation materials over there?
At this point, there's not, but it's partly because we haven't in May, we're hoping to really just do it, a big kickoff and get it out there. The problem with the, when we got, when we were able to, to build the, the collection, COVID wasn't allowing us, we were curbside, we were, it was just so we didn't, we didn't get, we didn't get to do the big, the big kickoff.
Right.
So that's something that we will do. And, and based on how the equipment goes, right now it's, it's out of the Spencerville branch.
Right.
We will hopefully, you know, add into the, to the Cardinal branch. Storage will be a bit of an issue when we look at the bigger, you know, the kayaks and, and whatnot, but that's something that we're, we'll cross when we, we get to it.
Thank you. Let's see, Counselor Cameron. Let's see, Counselor Dillibow wants back in again.
Yes, just, just one quick, quick question, Donna. Are you still on curbside pickup or do you have people coming into the library now?
No, we're, we're open. We're fully open now.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there are no other questions with CEO of the library, oh, sorry, Counselor.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor. I just want to know, would you take donations of fishing poles and whatever? Golf clubs, soccer balls and so on from the public? Do they have access?
We hadn't, it's not part of our policy. We're kind of looking at, I mean, depending on what shape it's in, I guess, that would be, that's fine. I, I'm not going to refuse it. But certainly the condition, because again, we're, you know, we do have some responsibility when we're lending stuff.
Absolutely.
So, good. Thank you. Okay, so once again, thank you very much for coming this evening to present your report. Congratulations. We think we've had a very successful year. Very happy with your ask, needless to say, and I'm sure it will, it will, I'm sure it will be well received. So best wishes for next year. And when you're planning things for next year, don't forget, we might be able to get the kids on a train again.
We're hoping. Thank you.
Great job, Donna.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so now I'm going back to my agenda. And the next delegation on the agenda is Jackie Smiley from the Johnstown Tennis Courts. And I think Jackie, I see you on the screen. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and we hear you just fine. So do you have a presentation or you just want to speak?
Well, I'll speak. I, I did provide the, the copy of the email that I had sent has been, is included after your agenda, which gives an overview of what I'm here for. And that's really to advocate for resurfacing of the tennis courts in Johnstown to become a multi-use surface, not, but not only for tennis, but for pickleball or basketball or any kind of outdoor activity such as a outdoor fitness class or outdoor yoga. And it's great to, it was great to hear that Donna's got the recreation library because I think it would be nice if it could be expanded so that we can include some of the equipment that could be used on the court. Unfortunately, the court is in a lot of disrepair. And we did try to apply for a port grant last year, but we're unsuccessful in achieving it, but would like to apply for another one this year. But at the same time, we're looking for support from, from, from the council to help with some of the renovations and that are required. We have to excavate and repave the surface, put on a, and put on a surface that's suitable for playing all kinds of sports like that. In addition, part of the fence has been removed and the posts are heaving. So really the posts and the fence need to be removed, especially if we're going to have the repaving done of the tennis courts. We have obtained several quotes in order to get this project done. And for the paving, we were, Steve was fortunate to connect with Steve Jingerus from Landex who has offered to contribute eight thousand dollars worth of services in order to excavate and pay, or excavate the, demolish, excavate and to compact the area. The remaining ten thousand dollars would have to be either be put into the port application in addition to the paving after this work is done. And the paving at this point with the one quote that we have right, current quote is about sixty-four thousand dollars. After that, we're looking at replacing the fencing and also purchasing the, the nets and the poles that need, that are required for the tennis courts. So the South Edwardsburg Recreation Association has kind of a little project task force that has been working on this project for a couple of years. And they're also willing to make a financial contribution towards it. And so we have provided quotes. I think what we'd like to do is submit an application to the port for the paving and the excavation part of it, which will probably be a major portion of the cost. And then we'd like to look to the, look to the port to see if they would be willing to donate project management or engineering services to oversee the project. I think what we're looking also to the council for is to see if they would be willing to remove the existing fencing and replace it with new fencing. Because it, we do need to have a good service and we need to have good fences and good posts in place. As far as coordinating any kind of scheduling of time to play, that could be coordinated in conjunction with Mike Spencer as he's managing the, the recreation for the township. I think it's something that's, could either be set up as a set times, a calendar for certain things. The nets could be put in place for tennis. The pickleball nets are very portable. And there's much, it's just much smaller courts. So the pickleball nets could actually be taken down and put up as as people use them for those particular time periods. Anyway, I think it's a great opportunity for people in the area to get outside activity as we continue to fight with, with COVID and people stay physically fit and it's an opportunity for the day camp program in Johnstown to also use the area. And I think we, we have a great landscape in the Johnstown area to have the court and also you know, the, the grassy area behind it. So I think that it's, I, I think that we're very fortunate to have that property and it would be really nice if it was maintained so that it could be used by all the residents in the area.
Thank you very much. Yes, and thank you very much. And just to let you know, yes, we do have the letter that you submitted. It's in our package here. So I appreciate you speaking to the letter and beyond it. And also, I know, I appreciate the fact that, that you're going to come back with a second application to the port of Johnstown again. So what I'm going to do at this point is just open the floor and see if there's any questions or discussion further. Floor is open for discussion. Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Smiley, for, for your presentation. It's great to see the commitment to not only Johnstown, but the township in general. It's great to see some community interested in getting the tennis courts rehab for multipurpose courts, not just tennis. You know, my full support and happy to help out in any way that I can. My question though, would go back to our last meeting on February second. It was said that, in that meeting, that there's a possibility that if these courts were done, that, that they could be locked and not available to all residents, that they might only be available to Sarah members. Do you have any information or do you, can you clear that up for me?
Well, the intent is that it's open for everybody in the township. So they, I mean, I think probably at the end of the day, they would be locked, like maybe at nine o'clock in the evening, but essentially they would be open all day for, for residents from Spencerville Cardinal, Johnstown and within our township to use. They're, they're certainly not restricted to people in the South, associated with the South Edwardsburg Rec Association.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And the seat counselor, Cameron, wants to jump in here and then I have a question.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Rick. Thank you for your, for your presentation and I just have a when you mentioned about the nets being put up and taken down, who would be responsible for doing that?
Well, the players themselves. I know that, I mean, I've been playing pickleball in in Prescott and the, the nets are very portable. They, they come in a, you, you can buy a net set for about a hundred dollars. They're very easy to assemble so that people that were playing, playing can put them up. So if there's, you know, if there's a scheduled time to play pickleball and people have either completed an online registration or reservation to play pickleball, they could access the nets and assemble them.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you. So we're, it's my understanding that the tennis courts and the pickleball courts will be on the same area or the same tarmac. Now, when the pickleball is being played, are the tennis nets up or would they be down?
No, you could, because the pickleball courts are smaller, you could actually have two pickleball courts on one tennis court. So you could actually have somebody playing tennis on one of the courts and you could probably have two pickleball games going on in the other court. Just because the way the, the, the nets can be set up across from, across on each side of the tennis net.
So, so then if somebody showed up at, we'll say eleven o'clock, that wanted to play tennis and there was pickleball being played, could, would they be able to do that?
Yes.
Okay. And then I'm assuming then that, and I shouldn't do that, but I'm assuming that then the tennis court nets would be left up all the time.
Yes.
So if somebody showed up at, say, eight thirty at night and when it's late out, they could play tennis?
Yes.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And I guess my question was along the line, and I can't remember your application to the port last year. But my understanding is that there's a fair group working with you on this project. Is, is that correct?
Yes, there, there's a group from the South Edwardsburg, the South Edwardsburg Recreation Association executive were working on it with me. And I believe Greg's on the call. He can speak to that as well.
Sure, maybe if you would, I understand that there's a fair interest here, if you would. Mr. Maudler?
Through the chair, thank you. Yeah, South Edwardsburg Recreation are, are interested in supporting this endeavor. Jackie is, has a list of sixty potential players that have expressed interest of not only play, but to help with the, with the pickleball tennis court setup. So last year in our application to the port, we committed five, or seven thousand dollars. We have not completed the application for the port as it's due April the first. And because of COVID, we've not had an in-person Sarah meeting to talk about this year's application, but we will be putting one forward and our, our commitment will be in the neighborhood of seven thousand dollars.
Okay. And so the deadline, I think now has been advertised as April first. Is that correct?
According to the port website, yes.
Are there any other questions here before we move on?
Okay, Counselor Dillibow. Yeah, I just have one maybe to help clarify up the pickleball tennis court that Council Cameron was asking about, I think her facility manager would vouch for it. And I would like to ask is, I think, we'll probably see more pickleball than tennis due to the facility man?
Through the chair to Counselor Dillibow, I would concur that we would probably have a better following for the pickleball than the tennis.
I guess the, the point that's been made with me by a number of callers is that people have not been able to play tennis because of the bad condition of the, of the, of the pavement. And it's quite a number of years since they've been able to use it as a tennis court safely. So the point that's been made with me is that if we, if Sarah, working with the board or whoever, if we provided a proper court with smooth surface and appropriate markings, that the, the interest in tennis may come back a bit. I'm told that there are a few people from our township that do enjoy tennis, but they play it elsewhere, Prescott and other places. So are there any other questions here before we move on and I thank the president, the presenter? Okay, well, thank you very much then, Ms. Smiley, for coming and making your presentation here tonight. And I guess the next thing for us to do is to watch for your application at the port project level and then be aware of the fact that once the sub base and the pavement is laid, you, you would possibly be looking for the township to pick up some of the the extras that weren't included in your application, like the netting, the, the, the surface that the company from Ottawa puts on top of the pavement with the lines, the biting, et cetera. That, that would be basically where the council would fit in.
That would be great.
The port application is well received. Okay, so once again, thank you very much for your presentation here. Good luck putting your application together and we'll, we'll see that prior to or just after April the first. Thanks again.
Thank you for your time.
And thank you, Mr. Maudler, for your words of explanation there. Okay, so now I'm going to move on to item number four B on the agenda, which is now four C, which is the South Nation Conservation Budget. And I believe Angela Coleman, the general manager, is standing by. And we have talked to her prior to the meeting. So Angela, if you'd like to put, put on your video and join us, we're happy to have your presentation. And just to let you know, we do have your slide presentation in front of us. I don't know whether you're going to speak to it or how you're going to handle it, but the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to join you tonight and present our budget presentation. As mentioned, we did circulate copies of our full budget as well as the slideshow that we presented to the board back in the month of November. Counselor John Hunter and poor Counselor Hunter, he had a full meeting with me this morning and now back tonight. So he knows part of my day anyways today, but he had an opportunity to take in the budget presentation. In terms of presentation, I will put, I will try to share my screen and I think that we talked about that, Rebecca, if we would put up to share a screen and we'd be sharing the budget presentation. And let me just see if I can do that.
So ditch the forty-minute limit.
Ditch the forty-minute, let us, I gotta, yeah, I guess we should, we should talk. Ditch the forty minute, let us, I'm gonna, yeah, I guess we should, we should talk about that, Mr. Chair, before we do that. What, what is your expectation and in terms of timing? How many minutes would you like me to speak for?
Okay, so I'll just let the clerk outline the, the the parameters as per our procedural bylaw. You would, Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to Angela. For presentations of this nature, there are fifteen minutes in length with follow-up questions to council and committee.
Okay, perfect. So I will go briefly over the high points, over overviewing the levy contribution, the general budget, and a quick, a quick follow-through of some of the slides. I am having a little bit of trouble with this system and sharing my screen, however, so I'm trying to do that. Going to try and share my, share my screen here. And I'm not sure if well, we have, the members of council have the budget presentation, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to pop it up on my screen, and you have copies, is that correct, Mr. Chair? Okay, okay. Hard copies, perfect. So in terms of the budget presentation, I'm just putting it up on my screen so I can see it. Let's just see if we can share it. Is it possible to see that?
Yes, we see Appendix B Budget 2022.
Perfect. So we have the slideshow here, and then we'll have a discussion of of the of the slides. So in terms of budget presentation, we do this each year in in about the month of November, and we go over the budget. So the budget presentation, as I presented to you, you may note, it's our seventy-fifth anniversary this year, and the budget theme this year was very much preserving our legacy. So we're working towards a number of events to celebrate the seventy-fifth. And this budget presentation, as you'll note, in the top right-hand corner, goes with, along with the corresponding budget that you actually have with you. So preserving our legacy, it's a reminder that the work we do is work that is a result of meeting with the people in the watershed. That includes councils and and staff of your municipalities, as well as property owners, the agricultural community, the development community, our First Nations partners, as well as different level of government and members of the general public. This particular slide shows the healing place and some of the work that we undertook in 2021. And I think probably a fairly good news story for the municipality and others. Like many, our budget has some high points to discuss. Our Conservation Authority has seen a lot of growth. So as the census numbers come out, we have seen municipalities with growth, growth as high as seventeen to twenty percent. That's resulted in additional uses of our parks, additional uses of our programs and services. And that's meant since the pandemic that we've had a number of challenges in keeping up with the programs and services in the watershed. We have had a lot of success in fundraising from federal funding provided to update floodplain maps, as well as acquire digital information and overhead flight information that allows us to do floodplain maps, particularly for development areas where our floodplain mapping was either out of date or in need of an update. As everybody knows, there's supply chain and inflation pressures on on these budgets and all others as we look forward. Our budget represented about a two percent cap on an increase, and we know that those pressures are there because actual inflation from September to September was about four point four percent. So we know as we try and keep our budget within that two percent range, that in fact, it is sometimes challenging because of the additional costs for certain things in the watershed. We've also, as a result of the pandemic, had a lot of demand for programs and services such as tree planting. And we did see it, at least in the beginning of the pandemic, some forest rev, forestry revenue decline. And we also have a number of municipal service agreements, like the one that we have done for the Port of Prescott, perhaps not, sorry, the Port of Johnstown, perhaps not as extensive as as that large project, but certainly lots of small projects for a number of municipalities to help them through these times. Our budget this year is approximately eight million dollars, the 2022 budget. As you can see here, that comes approximately about half from the municipal levy, with another half being user fees and special project fees that make up the entirety of this budget. And again, just showing on page seven of your budget document, that our reserves sit at about two point seven million dollars, or forecast to be about two point seven million dollars, which represent for an organization of our size and complexity, simply an appropriate reserve, not excessively heavy, not excessively light, so a pretty good, a pretty good reserve there. Our municipal levy comparison, you can see there, the net increase is about one hundred and fifty-one thousand over the 2021 buzzet budget. And again, like I said, growth accounts for about one point four percent of that averaged throughout the jurisdiction, with about a two percent increase for for costs there. And this program lists as well special levies for the city of Ottawa. About, this is the breakdown of budget, again, partner funding, user fees, grants, and miscellaneous. So this is the breakout of other sources, so perhaps, you know, not unlike your municipality with certain, certain larger contributors and and projects that you have, we certainly have a high amount of fundraising compared to what an average municipality would have for their budget. Again, just some basic notes about the budget, and you've had a chance to review. To get through it, I'm gonna have to go pretty quick. Our resource management budget that's broken up, and normally, like I said, we would have all of our team leads present this budget, and it takes about two hours. But we're gonna go really quick tonight, and I'm not sure if you want to entertain questions at the end, Mr. Mayor, or throughout. So water resource management, I'll just watch, watch the screen to see. Basically, Water Resources Management pages fourteen and fifteen of your budget document, you've got the breakout there, and the water levels are really, you know, about the work we do to assess watershed conditions and flooding in a number of areas across the watershed. The partner programs here represent the work that we do for private land tree planting, as well as county roadside and other tree planting projects. So this is, again, pretty high level in the work. Some of it is throughout the watershed, others in targeted areas such as the Rose Forest in the nation municipality. Our water program is, is part of what we do for a number of municipalities. The watershed monitoring here is in Bear Brook Creek in Carlsbad Springs. And then we have coming up on page twenty-one, a few different partner projects, including habitat restoration, as well as some federal and provincial grant programs. Some of those programs are typically, as we describe a program in our budget, those are things that are of a fixed cost and duration, and often the types of things that we would have an agreement with the municipality to perform. The Habitat Restoration Projects that we're looking at here are projects that are funded often by outside partners. In this case, we're looking at partnerships with the Ontario Power Generation, as well as some programs that we have with Ducks Unlimited. This is a project that's showing a survey happening along the Ottawa River. And again, these are federal and provincial programs, and we'll go through some of those. This section of our budget is dealing with conservation lands, vehicles and equipment, and the infrastructure of our organization. So we, as you know, have many parks and conservation areas throughout the jurisdiction. We see about two hundred thousand visitors annually at the parks and recreational facilities that we operate. Here, we're showing South Dundas, the Robert Graham Trail, also close to your municipality as well. So we have, as I mentioned, quite a few parks and recreation areas and river access points along the watershed. These are important because they provide additional opportunities for things like tourism and economic development within the municipalities. Again, a lot of that, the financing from that, you know, will get grants to assist with park upgrades and so forth, much like the type of work you're talking about today. It takes a lot of fundraising and other efforts to put together some of those projects. This is page number thirty-four and thirty-five of your budget. The Conservation Authority manages approximately thirteen thousand acres of land as a public land trust. Those are lands that we own. We manage an approximately additional seven thousand acres for a grand total of twenty thousand acres of ecologically significant lands in the watershed. So this budget area covers things like our municipal property taxes and the work that happens on our properties. This also includes our conservation land budget, where we do acquisitions. Sometimes those lands are donated to the Conservation Authority. Other times, we have federal funding, provincial funding, and the local municipal forest land acquisition levy that allow us to purchase properties. And this property was purchased last year when the staff went out to do the site assessment in Alfred Plantagenet. Lo and behold, they found a moose on the property, so proof that the the properties are, they come with residents, and we leave the residents there. Conservation lands also includes an active forestry component. The forests are generally managed for ecological health, and they do generate some revenue from the, for the authority to help offset costs and expenses that are ongoing, but they also are part of maintaining a properly functioning properties and forest. Vehicles and equipment, basically a fleet of vehicles to be using for everything from property to site visits. Our building in Finch, Ontario, if anyone have, if you have seen it, these are expenses on page forty and forty-one that cover the costs of administering our building here in Finch, and it is a fairly, it's a refurbished building, I think, with a good story, is a former school purchased for a pretty good price and is, over the course of the pandemic, has been a good, good building with lots of space for the staff, particularly as many organizations are challenged with space. We do also maintain water control infrastructure, so that's everything from the dam, the large dam in Chesterville, to Chrysler Dyken Dam and other berm operations further downstream to protect communities and people and property from the risks of flooding, erosion, and in some cases, landslide. So we do have a number of water control structures. They also provide clean drinking water for downstream municipalities, as well as prevent us from having, you know, sort of more algal blooms in, as a result of low flow in the summertime, so they keep the flows up as well in the water course. That's important because the the water course is a receiver for a number of upstream lagoons from other municipalities, so the low-flow augmentation function of the dams is also important, in addition to the flood protection component of those. We move now on forty-five and forty-seven to our approvals team. The approvals group at South Nation does everything from development reviews, the sewage system reviews, source water protection, as well as some special projects. Again, we've had quite a busy time with the change in permitting applications, as we've seen a lot of growth, particularly in those suburban areas close to the city of Ottawa. We've probably seen an increase of about twenty-five to thirty percent in permits year over year, over the last two years. So this is our Development Review Services and the staff that work with them.
So I'm going to interrupt you just here because I don't know whether we'll have a chance to get all the way through this, but I did want to ask you about the sewage systems review and the permitting, because as you know, we've received notice from the Leeds-Grenville and Lannard Health Unit that they're going to get out of this business. And so the gist of my question was, are you, is that the type of business or the type of service that you would be able to offer to us on a cost recovery basis?
Yes, absolutely. We have had some discussions at the staff level. And when, when the time is right, we can do a specific presentation on the sewage review program. This is the budget on page fifty and fifty-one, as it currently sits in the budget that's before you. So you can see there that we're representing, we're carrying out the program, I should say, on a cost recovery basis for about thirteen municipalities right now. And we've been doing that for most of those municipalities about twenty years. So while some health units continue to deliver the program, others stepped away a while ago. So this is Monique in the photo, and she's been working with the sewage system program for over twenty years. So a wealth of experience there, and all three inspectors have at least fifteen years of experience each. So certainly, it's something that we could, could offer for the municipality.
And you, you recover those costs from the individual homeowner at the time of construction, do you not?
That's correct. It's a fee for service from the permit application.
And is it a flat fee or is it very?
It is a, it is a flat fee and the fee schedule, I mean, I have a copy of the fee schedule on our website as well. But I could even, I mean, depending, I think we, we could even pop it up on the screen. It depends on how much time you have. If you want to look at that now, or look at it another day, I'll leave that at your discretion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is maybe we'll just move and see if there are any questions. I know you're not all the way through here, but we do have a long agenda here this evening.
Yep.
And so, and and I know that members have seen your presentation prior to the meeting. So are there any, we'll just skip to the question period and see if there's any questions here in addition to the ones that I've asked about the septic tank, septic system approvals. Counselor Cameron?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In one of your slides, you showed the, on page thirty-two, thirty-three, you have a picture of the trail, trail improvements is, and I think perhaps I should probably even talk to Counselor Hunter about this, because he's affiliated with it. But do you, is there a, or something mapping where all these parks and trails are that we could, that we could get?
Yes, absolutely. I can share that with the staff, but it's on our website, so that shows all of the areas that we have.
But is there print material?
Is there print material? Yes, there is some print material available, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's what interests me is a material of the entire watershed showing the location of the various parks. And by the way, we're also very aware that you have a water access point here in Spencerville, at Spencerville Mill.
Yes.
And also, a few years ago, you helped us out with a, with a fishing raft at the, at the Cardinal waterfront.
Yes.
Wheelchair accessible.
Yes, yes, quite, quite a nice, a nice addition, I think.
Now, are there any other questions here from folks? Okay, so I think you've indicated that all the discussions regarding the septic at this point have been at the staff level, but I'm sure you'll be hearing from the staff, because it does appear that the original kind of flag that was up the flagpole from the Leeds-Grenville-Lannard Health Unit, it does appear that they are going to get out of that business, and we will be looking to make some other arrangements. I don't know what, in our earlier discussions, we didn't feel that we had the ability to do it in-house, but that may have changed now that our new building inspector has arrived at home. So that'll, you'll have to carry on that conversation with the staff, if you would.
Absolutely. I think that makes sense.
Now, would you just review for us, what is our assessment this year? I was just looking to see if I could see it in the actual presentation, but I don't see it as it pertains particularly to the Towns of Edwardsburg, Colonel. Sorry, sorry.
Sorry, can you see the screen?
Yes, we can see South Nation Conference, Appendix A Budget.
Yes, okay, perfect. Okay. Okay, so the Edwardsburg Cardinal contribution, you can see the breakout here on the municipal levy comparison here. So we've got the 2021 levy showing up at fifty-five thousand, six forty-nine. And then we have a total of of levy for 2022 at fifty-seven thousand. So the apportion, your apportion portion, your apportioned part of our total levy is one point three nine percent. And the overall increase, based on what we have for your actual assessment and your numbers in the watershed, your increase is not the three point three increase. Your increase represents an actual increase of two point four three percent over year over year.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions here to follow up on that part of the discussion? That's reasonable increases, I would think. Although we are going to have a bad year. Okay, so, Ms. Coleman, I wanted to thank you for your presentation. I'm sorry. We had to sort of terminate a little bit early. We had to sort of terminate a little bit early, but I do have to get moving here. So thanks again for the presentation. If there's no other questions. And understand you're at home, so you don't have a drive.
Well, I'm at the office, but that's fine. That, this is a good place to. Closer, I'm closer to home.
Of course you're the home.
Well, I, I thank you again for your attention and the request to present the budget. Should you need anything, especially regarding the subject program. Staff, I'm sure will reach out and please don't hesitate. We're glad to help in any way we can with that transition.
And just before we let you go, I want you to know that we're still working with Infrastructure Ontario. To try to get you some provincially significant wetlands. That you can mold into your land acquisition portfolio. Unfortunately, Infrastructure Ontario seems to be taking a hard line that they sell at. They sell at appraised value, but on provincially significant wetlands, the appraised values are not, of course, as. As extensive as they would be for active farmland. So it's not a dead issue, but let me put it this way. It's like watching paint dry.
Well, I, I wish council good, good luck and a good meeting. So I'm sure that, like I said. There's anything we can do to help you, you know where we are.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll move on here to item number five. And I'm just going to introduce these two projects. The recent five A is on. Because at the last meeting, we did have a discussion about truck five. And I left the meeting feeling. I left the meeting feeling that we had. Don't, no, we had reviewed an issue, but we hadn't really left it in a comfortable situation. So. I wanted it brought back on this agenda to see if there's any other pickup on that. I think the issue was. That we now all realize that this truck is number one, it's an older truck. And number two, the, I think, and I don't have Counselor Dilavas' numbers in front of me, but. He provided us with a four-year history of maintenance on the vehicle. And we saw the, getting to see that it was becoming very expensive to maintain the vehicle on an annual basis. And then we also learned that it's not scheduled for replacement until twenty-twenty-three. So one of the concerns that I had, knowing what's happening at the county level was. You know, should we be now trying to provide a pre-budget approval for that truck even for the twenty-twenty-three year? And the reason I'm phrasing it that way is that at some point during this term of council. And it could be as early as May or June, we may become a lame duck council unable. To make commitments that go beyond December the thirty-first. But if we had given a preorder, done a, done a. Request for proposal and gone through our procurement process and then done a preorder in. Twenty-twenty-two for delivery in twenty-twenty-three. I think we would be able, subject to the clerk's interpretation, we would be able to arrange that. So. I'm just putting those ideas out because I left the meeting feeling that we hadn't really had a. Firm grasp of that issue. So I don't know whether anybody wants to pick up with that or what's the feeling here? I'm not going to belabor it. I'm going to move on unless I see other people coming forward.
Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm willing to go through procedure and. Now. And hopefully get this vehicle through the winter. And use it very little in the spring. So we won't have that big twenty-eight thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. The budgeting for it because it will come and it's going to be maybe a year, year and a half before we get that vehicle. So I would like this myself. I would like to see the CEO permission that get a tender for a new crop this year, twenty-twenty-two. And put it in the budget. For reserves, under the reserves if we have to, and the new council in twenty-twenty-three can. Take that out of the reserves or find another way to finance.
In other words, if it arrives in twenty-twenty-two, we would use the reserves. If it doesn't, there's no cost.
Well, it would be, yes. And then we've got work in progress. You just run it over to work in progress for twenty-twenty-three, get a new council. They can make a decision of leave the reserve alone and take it out of capital.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes, I'd just like, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to. Ask Counselor Gilova. Was the number that you quoted at the last meeting, was it around three hundred thousand dollars or over three hundred thousand dollars?
In what?
For the repairs that you put in this vehicle.
No, it wasn't. No, no. It was about a hundred and twenty. No, it's a couple hundred though, eh? It, I can.
Well.
But we're not, we're not going to labor. No, don't be like that. No, no, okay.
It was enough to, we know that we're thrown, but you know, good money after a bad thing. So let's just play the book.
Question is how to get on, out from underneath continuing expenses. Okay, so any other discussion on this item? I mean, I think as you see as we go along, we, we don't have much room for flexibility this year, but. I think one of our main interests is trying to figure out how to cut expenses. Okay, I'm going to move on. Five B, I'm not going to deal with Paul because we've already had that presentation from Jackie. Smiley here. So I think our main objective here at this point is to. Wait and see what kind of an application comes forward under the port projects and how we deal with that. We know that any contribution municipality makes would be sort of after that happens. So I'm going to move on to item six A. No, I'm sorry. I'm going to move on now to six H. Because I think six H paints a picture that we all need to see before we get into. Six A, B, C, D, and E, and F, and G. So as we look at six H.
What page is that on now?
Now, we're on page fifty-seven of sixty-one. And this picks, paints the larger picture of where we stand. Their total budget proposal, assuming that the numbers that. We're going to run across in six A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. Assuming that those numbers survive in the evening. What the treasurer is telling us here is that. Well, and I'm looking at the background, there are a one percent increase in the tax levy for twenty-twenty-two raises sixty thousand, nine fifty-five. The overall draft budget after four budget meetings and including the drafts we have in front of us tonight. Requires an additional one million, six hundred and four thousand in tax levy or twenty-six point three two percent. Now. Current taxation supported revenue required to fund the total draft twenty-two. To capital is two million, two forty-two, nine thirty-nine. Now, there's no reference here to. Any effect on the operating account, but on the operating side. But just on the capital side, we, we would be looking for two million, two forty-two. And two of those projects are the two stormwater management projects. So there we stand, and unless we do something with either the capital or the operating budgets. We're looking at a. And basically the staff is only providing us with one alternative, and that's the borrowing of two point two million dollars. I personally believe that there are other alternatives available to us. And I just want counsel to know that as we go through the other budgets that we're going to see here tonight. I'm focused on what we're being asked to borrow and the borrowing. To support that two point two million of capital would be one point four million dollars. So does anybody have any questions to the treasurer at this point in time before we begin looking at these five or six budgets that we've got in front of us here? And then, of course, the next thing that we'll see is the next overall draft budget. Okay, so if there's no questions, I'm going to go straight then to. The draft library budget, which is on page thirty-one of sixty-one. And on page thirty-one of sixty-one, you've heard the presentation from the CEO. You've heard that the ask has been reduced now. And we have a recommendation that committee recommends that council direct staff to include the twenty-twenty-two. Library budget estimates into the overall draft twenty-two budget for committee and council final review and approval. And I believe that the ask was, if I recall correctly, was it ninety thousand? Discussion here, chairs, room for discussion.
I would, I would move the recommendation myself, Mr. Mayor.
Also, okay, moved by Cameron, second by Deshaun, and that's. Going to add ninety thousand, five hundred. Further discussion on the recommendation. Hearing none, about to call the question, those favor? Motion is carried. All right, now, I'm on the next item on the agenda, which is the safe restart funding, which is six B. And so again, there's a briefing note here and. Before we get into this. I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding the briefing note. And so maybe the treasurer can help us out here before we start this. There's a reference in the briefing note to the fifty-eight thousand. That's already in the reserve, the safe restart funding reserve. So have we got additional monies to put into that reserve? That's, I guess that's the just question. Through the, the CEO, the treasurer, please.
Certainly through the chair. During twenty-twenty-one, we received two payments that totaled the fifty-eight thousand dollars. That was an addition over the original safe restart money that we received back in twenty-twenty. So we, we were in our budget, we were able to not utilize that money. So it is sitting still in the reserve. To be used and the intent was potentially to use it either for salaries and or additional COVID expenses in twenty-two.
Okay, so, but so what does the paragraph at the bottom of the page relate to then? It says, one option to address the potential budget variance. Would be to place a portion of the twenty-twenty-one surplus into the safe restart reserve as a contingency. I thought it was already there.
Well, if you read the entire information item, it actually explains that the fifty-eight. Thousand dollars would be used to support COVID screening at the arenas and the pools. For the spring season for the arenas only and the pools. This report was done before we were notified about the change in QR code reading as of effective March first. Though it, it probably is miscon, it's, it's confusing in the sense that. You're probably thinking we don't need the fifty-eight for the spring season. And I would agree, we don't now don't need that entirely. For the spring season of ice. So what the, when this report was developed, we were still thinking if we needed QR code and cleaning in the fall for when the arena's back open. We need an additional sixty-five thousand dollars to carry us from the end of, when we reopen the arenas to the end of the year. And we would have already expended the first fifty-eight on, on the COVID at the spring and, and spring season arenas and the pools.
Okay, so, so just to be clear, I have read the briefing note several times, as a matter of fact. And, and in my head, the fifty-eight thousand is already in a reserve. And, and that's what I saw from the, from the presentation I, I got on February the fourteenth, it's in the reserve. So are we drawing from that reserve for January, February, March? Or excuse me, I should say, are we drawing from that reserve for January, February for the arenas?
We will have to draw for January and February for the arenas. The action or the information was originally written. For supporting all of those COVID screeners for the ice season. From January through till whenever the Cardinal Arena stops and the Spencervale Arena stops. And then it would also cover COVID QR readers for the pools. The fifty-eight was slotted to use that to, to support those, those wages.
Okay, so is there a, now that we know what we know. Is there any action that we need as a result of this briefing note?
So through, through, through the chair, I, I, I would say not because. With, with respect to the, to the screening and everything, it, it's going to end sooner than we anticipated. And we should have sufficient capacity in that reserve should something. Occur again in the fall, but we're certainly hoping that it, that when we move out. Slowly with this reopening, that we're not back into the same situations with respect to. The QR codes and contact tracing, et cetera. So I think, I think as of right now, I think we're, we're good. But as indicated by the treasurer, when we originally prepared this, there wasn't a forecast, so. Our, our thinking was. That before the potential for, for, for a lame duck, if, if, if. We, if we thought that we might be in excess of that to, to, to transfer some additional money to that reserve. I don't think it's required right now.
So have, have, have we taken a bite out of the fifty-eight for January and February?
We, 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 we will.
We will?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll be notified when that happens?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Cameron? Just, just a clarification, the, the QR readers that we have, the, the, the people. Are they, are they our regular full-time staff or not?
Good job, Chair. Now, all of our, our QR readers at the front door and our COVID cleaners. That assist our full-time operators in moving the nets and defying the changes. Not, they, they are all part-time workers.
Thank you.
So. Okay, Deputy Mayor? Uh, yeah, so through, through yourself to CEO, maybe the. Facilities manager or possibly. The stubs. The leftover from the safe restart. Money. If we're no longer needed to do QR codes and, and. Extra cleaning required to COVID if, if COVID restrictions are done. If we haven't used up that reserve, are we expected to pay that back to the province or what? What exactly happens to the leftover?
Through the chair and the CEO?
Thank you. And through, through the chair, we. What we anticipate is that the, that funding was specific to, for, for additional expenses related to COVID. And where, where we sit right now, we, we were planning that most of that would, would need to go to. Salaries, but we anticipate that there, there, there's probably some refinements, for instance. On the trunk counter, we, we, we've installed a more permanent barrier. And I think there are some other areas where, where, where that, that funding can be utilized if we're not, if we're not going to need it for, for employee expenses.
Okay.
So I think we, we, we will, we will, we will have some areas where we can.
Okay, and, and because you had anticipated that you're going to use, you certainly didn't flag to the province that you might not need.
Uh, no, we will, we, we certainly will need to report on that, what, what, what areas we spent on, on that. So it, it does need to be. Associated with, with those kind of expenses.
Counselor Hunter, oh, I'm sorry. We'll go back to a follow-up with the Deputy Mayor and then the Counselor.
So just keeping in tune with this as a budget meeting, so that. Number be at twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand. I'm assuming then if it's going to be used for. Other, other projects that we've already committed funds to, they must be included. other, other projects that we've already committed funds to, uh, they must be included in a budget somewhere. So would that reduce that budget then by whatever the amount left is in this?
So, so, so through, through the chair, uh, no, we did, we, we didn't put any of that of those items in there. The, the, the commitment was simply that that fifty-eight thousand would go to, to, to wages. So I think these would be additional items, just to ensure that we use up the, the funding.
Counselor Hunter.
Through the chair, chair, CIO or treasurer. We have a ballpark figure of that fifty-eight for wages for these two months, roughly how much we've used of it, we're gonna need it.
I will ask the treasurer, but I'm not sure if she has that number rate rate at this moment.
So through the chair, no, I don't have an exact number for that. Uh, we still, we process payroll after the pay is, you know, we do two weeks and then we process, we pay, we are processing payroll next week. That wouldn't be still a part of February, so, and there'll be another pay subsequent to that will take us up to the March first date. So I won't have that for until, uh, after the March first date, to know the actual salaries amounts that have been, that have been expended thus far.
Surely man, man, you can build roughly how many hours? Kind of a ballpark figure, we use twenty-five, thirty-five.
Through the chair to, uh, to Counselor Hunter, um, excuse me, on average between it's about ninety hours a week for the Cardinal Ring. And it is.
I think, excuse me, I think what the counselor is getting at is it's been known for a week or so what's been, what's gonna happen on March the first. And I think what the counselor is looking for, has there, has there not been some estimation done as to where we would be as of the end of February? I don't think you wanna sit here and try to work numbers.
No, I, I think we just kind of hours, we know it's roughly fifteen, fourteen bucks an hour, it's easy for us to figure. Ballpark.
Through, 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 through the chair, I, I, I would say like worst case scenario, it'd be twenty thousand.
So my supplement question is we're, we're doing, doing rapid tests and stuff all quite a while now, we've been paying for, can this, the surplus of that money, can that not be diverted then to cover up the cost of all these rapid tests and stuff and, and pay for that, then so.
Well, so through, through, through the chair with respect to the, to, to, to the rapid tests, it, it, it has been I believe it's, it was ten dollars per, per, per package of twenty-five. So there, there, there's been very little outlay with respect to those tests at the, at this time, which yes, I think there, there are a number of those areas that we can now look to, 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 to deal with.
And, and just to add to that, I think it's ten dollars for a box of twenty-five if the CIO or somebody picks them up from shoppers drug markets, but if we ever get our order fulfilled from the provincial bank, it comes to us, my understanding, with no charge at all.
So through, through, through the, uh, that, that, that is, that, that is correct, but that we can certainly indicate that the the, the fire department was, was into that program earlier than, than the remainder of township. And in both cases, it's still, since, since it's in progress, so.
Right, so our orders are sitting not filled.
And, and, and my, my estimation is that they're likely not.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because again, there's a meeting with the health unit tomorrow morning. And again, the MPT will be there, and I just wanna be able to report to him that we have two orders, one from our fire department, one from our one from our municipal, uh, the rest of our municipality, two orders that are sitting not filled. And we're still getting them from shop and stock market. Okay, uh, are there any other questions with this briefing note? Because I think we've heard now that there's really no budget dollar implication to the safe start funding here. So I'm gonna move on to item number six C, which is the draft protective serp. Let me get it out in front of me here, protective services budget, and the briefing note is on page thirty-five. And the detail is on page thirty-six, so chairs open for discussion here. And there is a recommendation here that the, uh, that the council direct staff to include the twenty twenty-two protected service budget estimates into the overall draft twenty-two budget for final review and approval. Well, final review comes before approval. So on page thirty-six, you see those two budgets. Are there any discussions on page thirty-six before I ask for somebody to move the recommendation?
Question.
Mister Packwood?
I'll move the recommendation.
All right, so I have Mister Packwood moving, and then I have Counselor Cameron up for questioning. So you'll be first if I, if Counselor Packwood finds a second, or does he have a second? Counselor Hunter seconding. All right, now the recommendation is on the board, Counselor, you're first.
Uh, yes, thank you. I, I just want to question the livestock losses that we have. Which I see in twenty twenty-one is only nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. At one time, we used to be able to claim and get that money back or some of that money back. Do we, do we still, is that program still in, in effect? Where we, uh, we get reimbursed on certain, uh, certain debt conditions of that.
Through the chair and the CIO.
Yes.
I, I, I will maybe ask the, the treasurer, the clerk, maybe to, to speak to that.
Through the chair, I can, certainly through the chair, I can, you can see there is revenue that's been received against the loss. So, uh, granted, uh, an application is submitted for reimbursement. And then the township, I think, retains about thirty dollars of that as, as our fee for, for doing doing the application and, but we do have the costs of the livestock evaluator to pay as well. But we're reimbursed for majority of that cost.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up. It, it's, it's right there. Sorry about the question.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'm about to call the vote on the motion, which is the recommendation that's in front of us, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. All right, and moving now then to next item, which is the six D, the draft building department budget. On page thirty-seven, uh, thirty of sixty-one is the, uh, is the briefing note. And then the budget itself is on page thirty-nine. So I'm looking to see, there is a recommendation, yes. All right, discussion if any? Just a reminder that last year, we thought for sure we would have to take money out of the reserve to cover all of our costs in twenty twenty-one, but as we heard from our last meeting, the fees that we assessed in twenty twenty-one were a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, which was quite a bit more than we had estimated. And the consequence of that is that it looks like we will be contributing about seventy-four thousand back into that reserve at the end of twenty twenty-one. And so, uh, the recommendation pretty, pretty much doesn't have any financial implications for the tax levy, Counselor Hunter.
It doesn't have a taxation payation of taxpayers right now, and, and by having such a surplus last in twenty twenty-one, it's not gonna, if drawn out to cover, but fear, fears by the estimated revenues for the next, next year, it looks like we're estimating revenue coming in is still gonna be about sixty thousand dollars short of what, what our expenses are gonna be, so I think we're gonna have to we're gonna have a lot of, an awful lot of building going on, on this year to make up that that sixty thousand dollars that we're drawing out of reserves to cover the costs or else change in the way we proportion of fees that were some of the expenses were there that we're talking, uh, proportion of that, that over that would be put into the planning and part one thing that was coming from the building.
So, so through the, you know, through the, through, through the chair, uh, yeah, some, some, some of the chief building officials time is, is being allocated to, uh, to, I believe, I believe it is, is, uh, the planning portion of it. We're still, as, as a projected revenue, we still are, and it may need to be a, a portion differently, uh, even, even the following year.
See, Counselor Cameron wants in.
Yes, just a, just a question for clarification, uh, through, uh, through you to, uh, CIO. Uh, on page thirty-nine, it shows, uh, account number, uh, twenty-five dash fifty-three twenty-six in the expense column, and it's for a registered code agent. Could you tell me what a registered code agent actually is and what they, the person does?
Through the chair and the CIO.
Through the, uh, through, through, through the chair, uh, I am drawing a blank on that, that registered code agent. But I can certainly follow up and confirm that unless I see the treasurer screen locked up. Maybe she has, uh, maybe she has the answer, and she can say anything.
I, I can certainly save you through the chair. Uh, we've used that code, uh, account before when we had, uh, needed to use an outside building inspector that had a different qualification for, uh, certain buildings, um, that we needed, um, you know, uh, different expertise, so that's, or if our, if our building, our chief building official was off, we utilize one of the neighboring chief building officials, uh, to answer some of the inspection calls. And it, it's just a small little contingency amount of money that we save just in case we need that additional, um, assistance within the department outside of the township.
Just to add to that, we used a, a registered code agent to handle the giant tiger building permit application because at that time, our chief building official wasn't qualified to deal with that a building of that extent.
Yeah.
And complication. Okay, so there is a recommendation here, uh, the chair's looking for a mover and a seconder to move the recommendation. Have Counselor Packwood moving, and Deputy Mayor Deshaun seconding. Are there any additional questions before I call the question? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right, and so now I am moving to uh, item six E, which is the draft twenty twenty-two draft bylaw enforcement budget. And the draft bylaw enforcement budget, the briefing note is on page forty, and the, the the numbers or the estimates are on page forty-one. And so you see the estimates there. Now, there is no recommendation here, but I'm going to ask that when we, when we finish the question session, I'm gonna ask that somebody move that these estimates be included in the next draft budget. No questions? Okay, I'm looking for someone to move that these estimates be included in the next draft. Okay, Mister Packwood moving, does he have a seconder?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron seconding, and it is that the draft bylaw estimates be included in the next overall draft budget that comes to us. All right, I'm moving on then, and I'm now at item number uh, six F, which is the draft fire department's budget.
Did you call the question?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I not? Those in favor?
Yeah, I think we all are, but.
Okay, so that's where I am, I'm back at it. Draft fire department's budget, so that's the, uh, the briefing note is on page forty-two. And I think that the, um, the budget is on page forty-three and forty-four of sixty-one. So floor is open for questions here. I don't see any questions coming forward. And I would like to, just before I go on here, I have got a master motion. That the, I don't, I would like to inform members of council and the committee that Solicitor General held a teleconference yesterday, the mayors were specifically invited to be there. I was hoping to duck it, but the CIO colored me twice and explained to me that it was important to be there. And it was a, actually, a, I think, a Zoom meeting, but I was in Ottawa with my wife at a medical appointment, so I had to take it by teleconference for an hour and a half. And so I understand that the chief managed, managed to get a question in during the question period, and I'm sorry, chief, but I, I couldn't tell who, which question was yours. But I think the important thing that came out of that, uh, teleconference yesterday was the changes that are gonna be coming down by means of regulation. Now, I know that at some future meeting, the chief will address that particular item, it may even be on next week's public works budget, is it? Okay, great, so I'm not gonna say a lot more, other than to say that the the teleconference raised a lot of issues that are gonna recount, recup, require council acknowledgement. If I can put it that way. Okay, uh, so Counselor Cameron.
Uh, yes, I, I was just, uh, through, uh, through the chair to the fire chief or, uh, uh, the madam treasurer. Whoever can answer this, Brian, uh, on page, um, forty-four. There's two line items, one for insurance, the FIS, and then another one right under it for insurance. What, what is the difference between the two, uh, insurances?
I'll, I'll, I'll give that one a try.
Thank you.
I believe, and then the, uh, the treasurer can correct me, but I believe the first one, the VFI S is the volunteer firefighter insurance that we provide our firefighters. And the second insurance is the township, uh, overall insurance that we F L only covers all of the rest of our township operation.
Okay, so the township insurance does not on its own cover the volunteer. Is that correct?
Through, through the chair, that's correct. We have an additional policy specific for volunteer firefighters that, uh, covers them for accident.
Is it with the same company?
The chair does not.
And, and are all members of the volunteer fire department covered automatically, or do they have to sign on to it?
Through the chair, they, uh, everyone is covered, um, when the policy, uh, is renewed every year. So if somebody came, comes on, uh, when the policy is renewed, their name is added to the list, so there's a, a short information, and it may not be covered.
So at some point, chief, um, just for educational purposes, uh, you might want us to bring us a, a, a one pager or a half a pager that just tell us what those coverages are. In other words, what are they covered for? I'm assuming it's gonna be things like loss of limb, uh, serious injury, hospitalization, but I don't know that. And I think the, I don't wanna put words into coun- counselor's mouth, I think the counselor wants to satisfy himself that there's no duplication with that coverage and the other policy. I don't wanna put words in your.
That, that, that's fine, uh, Mister Mayor, you just, uh, you just asked my follow-up question, thank you.
So, I, I'm just noting here that, uh, the, the net, or excuse me, the gross revenue uh, that es- estimated to come into the department is forty-three thousand uh, compared to the actual thirty-eight that came in last year. And I'm noting that the And I'm noting that the expenditures are projected at five ninety nine compared to the five fifty nine actual from last year. And so that when you come to the net, the net differential from last year is nine hundred and forty four dollars. So are there any other questions before I ask for a mover and a seconder? Okay, I'm going to tell you the, here, here's the motion then that I think we need. And the motion would be that the twenty twenty two draft fire department budget, as presented on page forty three and forty four of sixty one, be included in the next draft of the overall twenty twenty two budget. Can I have a mover? Have councillor Hunter moving, and does he have a seconder? Have Mr. Packwood seconding. And there any further discussion on this? There are none, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, chief, I don't want you to go away thinking that that's etched in stone. As you can see, it's on paper, which is a highly volatile product.
You will know.
Well, that's a good way of putting it. All right, I'm now at item number six G, which is the draft recreation department budget. And six G then is on page forty five is the briefing note. And then the budget itself spans from page forty six through fifty three. Chairs open for discussion. I note that there's no recommendation here. Chairs open for discussion. I don't see any coming, if I don't hear any discussion, I'm going to move on. This, this particular budget leaves itself to a, just a good second look. Go ahead, counselor.
Yes, on page forty nine, under contract grass cutting. We have a. A little note that says increase in contractor pricing. Through, through you to the facilities operator manager of survey. How much of an increase do we have here?
Through the chair to councillor Karen, so in twenty twenty one, when our budget was presented to council, the, we had thought that the company that had. Completed the work in twenty twenty was going to do it, do it again in twenty twenty one. But then it was a couple of other companies that had come forward, so we decided to put it up for tender. By putting it in for tender, obviously the, the cost increased. And the added cost was basically the five thousand dollars that we had originally budgeted twenty twenty one, based on five contractors that it's in the price. So that contract was awarded and that grass cutting took place in twenty twenty one at a cost of thirteen thousand one hundred one dollars fifty eight cents. So for twenty twenty two, we've increased the budget to, to the thirteen thousand. And hopefully, hoping for potentially maybe a, a smaller reduction. But the tender won't, won't go to the second week of March, so we're unsure at this time.
Thank you, thank, thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Counselor Dillaw.
Thanks to the chair to show the manager. So Mike, you're saying that in twenty twenty one, we had it. Good day, regular contractor for eight thousand.
No, 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 we estimated it at eight.
Through the chair to councillor Dillaw. The cost that we had put in for the twenty twenty one budget was eight thousand dollars. That's what the cost was in twenty twenty. And we, when we reached out to the contractor who had been doing it for about five years because there was no other interest.
Right.
His price had indicated that he would keep it the same.
Right.
But then other companies asked to bid on the contract, and that's why they increased. So I will say, I, I will say that the contact, the contractor that was awarded the contract was the one that was doing the work in the first place. But his price went up because it went to.
Of five thousand, that's correct. Watch what you wish for, right?
So. Well, just being open and transparent, there were people that were interested in somebody, you know, submitting the bid. So, you know, I, I thought that we were obligated to, to give everyone a fair share in the previous year if there wasn't anyone that had come forward, so.
Counselor.
Leading to the. Budget here. Operating expense increased by a hundred thirty thousand seven hundred and sixty seven dollars, eight hundred and thirty percent. Mainly due to additional full time administration position. I really don't have a problem with, and also an additional of a part time facility operator. No, I, for. So the manager had been basically doing all these. These jobs, and I see administration, other administration position for full time. There, but now I'm never full time position, right? We need another half time position as well.
Through the chair to councillor Hunter. What was back in, I believe it was twenty nineteen, council had given us approval to move our, our full time lead hand operator to a strictly days position to be able to help in the training of our young workforce. And what we were finding is it was, it was more difficult to be able to do that if, if, if that individual was stationed in one arena. So this past year in October, we brought on someone twenty four hours a week, and we were able to cover that in, in the twenty twenty one budget. And that individual works out of the suspense over three days a week. That allows my lead hand then to continue working Monday to Friday days. Then he's able to work between the two arenas in the training of our very young workforce.
Administration, the, so the full time musician, a person. Do, do that as well as retrain it. You had a half time position, are you getting number? Half time that added on.
Sorry, not following you, councillor.
Well, you got a facility operator and a part time facility operator. With your full time additional administration.
Yeah, the, the full time administration position is basically is, is working with me. But the, the, the part time facility operators actually working at the arena and covers the, the shift that typically our lead hand would be doing. But our lead hand is now able to work strictly Monday to Friday days to be able to, to work throughout the facilities and not just be stationed, excuse me, in one arena.
Okay, are there other questions here? And the reason I'm, I'm, I'm moving on here is because earlier in the meeting, I had sort of. Dealt with the overall picture. And when I see an increase of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in an operating account like this, I'm. My suggestion is that this be referred back to staff. Right? I just don't see how this is the year for that kind of an increase to appear in front of us. And I think that there are some suggestions here that maybe we're just going to have to work around and live without this year. So I'm not, there's no recommendation, I'm not prepared to ask for a motion, but I would hope that we, I would at least be in a position to say that council has requested that the staff review this, this draft budget. And with, with a view to coming in closer to last year's, last year's net expenditure. And, and you know, when I look at an eight thousand dollar increase in grass cutting, maybe it's time that we had to change things around a little bit so that this, this whole thing comes back into our permanent staff that we have for the summer. And about thirteen thousand dollars would go basically be absorbed in our labor costs. Counselor Hunter.
Just a question for you to, Mike, I know when this operation budget was planned, we didn't know what the, the state of place on March first, so I have a question here. Have we not got extra labor built in, into this for the tools and stuff over the summer that we're figuring that we're going to have to have extra people on all the time here that might be helping do start operating?
Through the chair to councillor Hunter, now the, that safe restart money, as far as, as the COVID, for the COVID decisions was, is not incorporated in here.
Okay.
Most positions are.
That's correct.
Further discussion here? No further discussion, I'm about to move on. So that takes me basically to the end of the agenda that I have in front of me because already dealt with six H. And I think that that's going to have to be enough of what we see when we see now the next draft of the overall budget. And so I'm at item seven on the agenda, which is council inquiries or notices of motion. And if there's anything to bring forward, let individuals speak for themselves before I move on. Don't see anybody raising up. Number eight is the mayor's report I have done. Item number nine is the question period. And I see nobody in the gallery, and so I'll ask clerk. I see the clerk giving me the one, a nod, go ahead.
Hi, through the chair, we do have Mr. Modler still on Zoom here.
And so I, I think Mr. Modler is the only one, is he not?
Yes, yes.
So, Mr. Modler, if there are any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have two questions. One is a question, if I could maybe have an explanation on the, up. The process of clarity on this port application grant that the South Edwardsburg Recreation is being asked to submit again. If we're aware that the, the court rehab is going to be between a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand K, that's a rough estimate, all, all money's in. And we know that the port grant is a maximum of seventy five thousand. Sarah is willing to, you know, conditionally contribute between five to seven thousand dollars. If council's not putting any money in the budget for court rehabilitation, where's that money going to come from?
Well, we, we know that there's also a contribution from D A V X or whatever the name is. And I think it's a question of, I, I think it's a question of. Of determining how accurate the original estimates you just used really are. Because the per square meter cost for paving that we get from a quotation such as the one we've got tonight is good to have and provides us with some direction. But I think that we did a, an extensive amount of paving last year at the port, and the per square meter costs were considerably less. And the port this year will be engaging in another major paving program. And because we're doing such a large, extensive area at the port, the per square meter costs tend to be quite a bit less. And what I'm hoping may happen, and I don't know that it will, is that there may be, depending on timing and organization and project management, there may be an opportunity to include the tennis court work, either as, as an inclusion in the port project or as an additional separate quote to the port project, which may or may not, and I have no way of knowing, which may or may not result in a different estimate of total costs that you've just put forward. So I think in view of the. In view of the discussion that we had at the beginning of the meeting, where we see where we are with regard to total impact here, it behooves us to hold our powder a little bit until the situation becomes somewhat clearer. I don't know whether that answers your question, but I hope it does.
Unfortunately, it doesn't because it doesn't, doesn't answer where the other seven, you know, just shy of seventy thousand dollars is going to come from.
You're right, it doesn't at this point.
So it's, so then that leads into my, my second question, if, if I may, Mr. Chair. If the other surrounding municipalities are, are building multi-use courses, courts, and some of them are in fact diverting or stopping funding for other recreational ideas like splash pads and diverting it to pickleball courts to promote community spirit and maintain the quality of life. I'm just wondering why if, if both courts were in the original budget, draft budget, it made the first two or three cuts, and then a budget number four on September the second, without any real debate or discussion, both courts were just arbitrarily removed without any, and again, any discussions. So I'm just wondering the rationale behind that decision. If we're trying to promote community life and maintain community spirit, why that would be cut without any real discussion?
Well, Mr. Modler, were you, were you here for either of those budget meetings? I just can't recall.
I view, I, I viewed, I viewed it today on, on Zoom or on YouTube. And I, I honestly believe that one of the decisions may have been swayed by a comment that was brought up in our earlier discussion, that Sarah said that we would be locking the gates, we would be limiting access to it, which is totally fabricated. We know that the, the courts are the property of the township, much like we worked with the facility manager and the township to do the dog park. It is the township's dog park. We work with the township to maintain it. So I'm just wondering if that comment from a councillor swayed the vote.
Well, I think you're wrong because if, I mean, for those of us that were here at the meeting, we all understood that the first two or three drafts of the budget included the full amount of the rehabilitation of both tennis courts, one in Cardinal, one in Johnstown. And, and they were both built into the budget on the basis of a grant application that had been made. And because that particular grant application was a grant that paid a hundred percent of cost, it was basically an in and an out if the grant had been successful. So it had no implications on the tax rate or the amount of money that would be raised in taxes. So when we found out that the grant had not been success, the grant application had not been successful, those two were removed. And we knew that we had to approach the thing from a different point of view and a different approach, as you have heard in earlier discussion here this evening. Now, with regard to your major premise, as to how come other townships are doing so much to improve recreation and we're not, just draw your attention to the fact that our taxpayers are subsidizing arena costs for two other municipalities at a cost to our taxpayers in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand. For two other municipalities at a cost to our taxpayers in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. In losses of revenue, uh, expenses over revenues at our own expense. So I kind of bristle at the thought that we're not spending our fair share on recreation. We maintain two arenas to the benefit of three municipalities. So maybe we don't have a pickle court, but we've got two big arenas. Maybe they don't get full use because of COVID, but we maintain them to a pretty high standard. Now, I don't know whether that answers your question, but at this point. I don't think the pickleball courts are off the table. I think it's a question of massaging the numbers. And finding a mechanism, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do that. Does anybody want to?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Modler, if you paid attention to the, uh, to the, uh, video that you watched today. You would have realized that that was not a comment that I made. It was a question that I asked of councillor Gillibow. And the question followed the fact that if. Public money is going to go into tennis courts, refurbishment, or whatever else is to be done to them. Would everyone have access to them at all times? And that question follows last year when Sarah told us that their plan was to rent. Paddles to people so they could play on the court. To me, that says you're going to control the court, and if you don't rent the paddles from Sarah, you don't play. That was what that question was all about. I did not make any comment that you were going to lock the gates. I asked a question.
Okay, so I don't want this whole discussion to get out of hand here. And, uh, it's very difficult dealing with these kinds of issues in, uh, when we're, when we're talking to each other on the screen. Uh, so I'm, unless there's other issues here surrounding that I'm not aware of, I'm gonna move on here and, uh.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Mr. Mayor, if, if I could just indulge you for one minute, please. If you think I was giving the impression that the current council is not supporting recreation. That impression is wrong. You, you, you as a council are supporting recreation. As you've duly noted, we are maintaining two great ranks that I will put up against any municipality. And I, and I applaud you for that. What I, what I questioned was why that expenditure was removed. Without. A conversation. That's all I'm asking. And you've answered it, and I appreciate that.
Councillor, thank you very much for those comments. They're appreciated. Councillor Hunter.
Uh, just to. enlarge on that, Mr. Modler, as you, you watch the thing, you'll notice that I was the one making motion to. Put the motion forward to remove them. This is my, my rationale behind it was. With the years and you've been out there, the number of times the township has put some money in to try to refurbish. Those courts and, and a little bit of fiction wasn't, didn't do what it should have did. Or. The main premise of mine, that I don't think we can afford to do those. Courts this year is, is where if you looked at our budget, we're having, we're two hundred. And seventy-five thousand dollar repair that we have to do to be able to keep the carter pool in operation. This year, and that was something that hadn't been figured until after the pools closed up last year. But this is gonna have to take, take place, so. With that extra expense in, in this year, I just didn't see, unless there's a different way of getting money someplace elsewhere, we could ask the taxpayers. To do another capital investment in recreation, when, when I think you'll agree that. If come to losing a pool or building a new tennis court, we gotta keep the facility of the pool going.
Thank you for your comment.
Thanks. Okay, um, if there's no further comment here, I'm gonna move on to item number ten on the agenda. And item number ten will get us into a closed session. Does someone have a motion to move into a closed session?
I think it was Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm myself, second by deputy mayor Dishar, committee proceeds in the closed session at seven fifty-five in order to address a matter of change. One, section two thirty-nine, two B personal matters identified individual including municipal or local board employees. Certainly recreation and minutes of closed session dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one and December ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Five-minute break, please.
I'm myself, second by deputy mayor Dishar, closed meeting is now adjourned. The meeting does now resume at eight fifty-one PM.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. So I'm gonna report out from the closed session. The council met closed session to discuss, uh, matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. And we also reviewed the minutes of the closed session stated November, uh, the eighteenth and November the nineteenth. And as all of that discussion, the deputy mayor will bring forward resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor John Hunter. That committee receives and approves closed session minutes dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one and December ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much. Uh, the motion is carried. And so now the chair is looking for the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll move by myself, second by councillor Cameron, that the committee does not adjourn at eight fifty-three PM, and thank you and good day.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.